I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of July 20th, 2022, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on June 13th, 2022. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, since we have no old business, our first speaker is Gail Godeski.
I'd like to make a statement first, please. Couple of the changes I'd like to announce, in an effort to better organize the city council meetings, this council thought it best to limit all public comment to five minutes. So you can see that we now have a clock timing it for five minutes to make sure everybody gets the five minutes. In order to do our government business efficiently, we decided to keep live streaming but to eliminate the virtual comments, which has been done throughout the county and will also be done with the planning board and zoning board as well.
So after that, Council President, that means all my questions I would like answered at the end of my five minutes.
It is a statement and comment period and not a question and answer period.
Okay, well, I'm going to be asking some questions and I would like some answers as a taxpayer. Good evening.
Questions will be answered if you would like during the agenda, when one of the agenda items come up, we will answer that question. Otherwise, you can wait at the end of the meeting and ask us questions, but not during the meeting.
Good evening. I would like to first start by discussing the prospect of tax increase for Bayonne. I understand it will be approximately 7.8%, although that's not set in stone as of yet. That being said, the Davis-Lay electors ran on the stabilization of taxes. The county budget meeting took place, and I know we always had a representative defend and protect the residents of Bayonne. Most mayors and some council of other municipalities always attended. I would like to know who our representative was at the meeting. The reason why I'm asking is that Hope, Boken, and Jersey City had strong representation at the meeting, and their taxes are going down. Further, Jersey City is receiving more open space from being at Bayonne, and it seems to me our county services are going down, with the exception, of course, of the Bayonne Park. We received an unfair share of funding, in my opinion. So who represented us and what was the calculation, please? I understand the county uses comparable sales and Bayonne does not. Did the county utilize commercial properties in the calculations? If so, we all know that commercial properties should not be included in the residential portion of the taxes. Can someone please explain why our taxes were increased when our county services are not up to par? Again, other than Bayonne Park. If no one knows the answer to this, please make note, and it is somebody's job to know exactly what happened at the meeting. For a period of time, I was reading online of all the incidents of crime in our city. Let's face the facts, there is a strong increase in crime. Some crimes that have been taken have not even hit social media. Sexual assaults, domestic assaults, always seem to get it under investigation, while other municipalities notify the residents almost immediately after the incident for safety reasons. It is public record, and we should not have to go to the internet to learn about any crime in our city. The administration's job and duty is to protect and serve the residents of the city. That being said, there is still no contract for the police. Now that Mr. Russo is at the BA, hopefully the negotiations will get down and dirty and give these heroes a contract, a decent contract, just like former police officers who received good pensions and good salaries. And this was during a time when our crime rates were minimal. Some of the people currently in our administration, those retirees, have received great pensions and have great, and had great salaries. Let's get it and give them a contract that they deserve. Now, for example, after doing some research, we need to hire more police officers. The escalation of crime and increase of our population in this town support additional police officers. Although larger than Bayonne, Jersey City has 975 police officers and 650 firefighters. That is a two-to-three ratio, and if my math is correct, so for every two firemen, there is three officers in Jersey City, but by no means am I advocating for less firemen. By all means, with the increase of citizenship and new development, we need more, more again for our heroes, and I am advocating for more hires of police and firefighters. Let's face it, everyone, the city is expanding faster than we had anticipated. Crime is definitely a major factor. Further, if my research is correct, Jersey City and possibly, in New Jersey and possibly the country, that has a one-to-one ratio of police to firemen. With all the construction and filming, additional services needed by our safety personnel, we need to hire more to protect and serve the citizens. Does anybody have any idea if the contract and hiring is close to a decision of finalization? I'm asking this from our elected officials. Now that COVID is on the rise once again, the administration decided to have in-person meetings only and during the heat wave to boot. You're making it more difficult for the public to speak unless questions and learn what's going on in the city by doing this. It seems like you don't want to hear from the public. Coming out in this heat is unhealthy, not just for the citizens coming to the meeting, but yourselves. We need to start thinking outside the box.
Please wrap it up, there's 30 seconds.
And allow people to participate. I will continue later, thank you.
Hi, my name is John Yado, I live at 30 East 50th Street, and I'd like to give my time turn over to Gail.
Good for you.
Sorry, we don't do that, sorry.
It's Robert's rules!
Everybody got five minutes.
It's Robert's rules!
No way, no way.
Five minutes, that's it?
I would ask...
Sorry, five minutes.
You can't stop her!
It's Robert's rules! He's yelling his turn to me! Come on, Gary!
Keep talking.
Is there a public comment? There is none in Robert's rules.
...to come into the meeting and voice their concerns. I would ask that the council please reconsider and reopen virtual meetings. Also, that being said, I think it would be prudent of the administration to reconsider all meetings to be online for different reasons and accommodate those that cannot be present for one reason or another. Fear of going out at night is one, health issues is another, but they still want to participate. So I'm asking respectfully to please reconsider that decision. So that being said, does this now mean that all employees will require to work in the building or at designated areas and no more remote working? Or is this, once again, ladies and gentlemen, an HR issue? What's good for the goose is good for the canter, as the saying goes. Now, getting back to the Bayonne Park, I think it would be extremely respectful to all those that we lost during COVID and most likely will continue to lose, to have a plaque somewhere in the garden with all the names of those we lost during COVID and any additional people that we may lose. My suggestion was told to several people, and I think that's an appropriate thing to do. We had two loyal employees for the city of Bayonne that passed away from this virus. I'm asking the council again respectfully to consider doing this, and I'm sure the county could come up with the extra dollars for a plaque and engrave all the names of those we lost. Once again, I'm here to ask for the umpteenth time, I'm getting confused on how many times they asked the status of the 32nd Street Bridge. Can anyone respond to that? If you can't, maybe direct your partner can shed some light on it. Also, what's going on with the 25th Street Bridge? Walk Bridge from Prospect to Avenue 8? Ms. Weimer, I know that that was part of your campaign, and supposedly I understand you said that it's in the works, maybe you can shed some light on the project. Finally, with the increase in citizenship, the city of Bayonne, I think it's wise of the administration and the council to consider a fourth ward and another at-large council person. The first and third wards have grown quite a bit, each of you that has been elected, with the exception of one, has won two or even three jobs. We need a full-time at-large that will be available to take care of the residents' concerns in a timely and efficient manner. I'm not saying that some of you are not taking care of the concerns of the residents, but let's face it, you have full-time positions that require most of your attention. We realize it's your bread and butter. However, we deserve someone that we could reach out to and get an immediate response. The census shows we have grown, so I think it's time the administration and council consider a fourth ward and an additional at-large, as we all know, we need an at-large. Once again, I hope each elected official on the dais, keep their oath to protect and serve the people of the city, the good of the people of the city as we move into the future. The sign at the end of Bayonne, as you're exiting the turnpike, says, "Welcome to the city on the rise." Do you want people to continue saying, "It's the city on the rise for dealing with crime"? This is your show now. Enjoy duty, put the pedal to the metal, be available for your constituents, and most importantly, do the right thing for the residents of the city. Take off your political hats, forget about the promises and favors, forget about the promises before you act. Think of the impact your decision will make, and then close your eyes, think outside the box, and please do the right thing. Thank you.
Dave Solari?
Good evening. I heard about communist countries, but I guess this is going to be communist city, if we're only limited and no cloth backs. You know, thanks to you. You guys got what you wanted, I can see it right. Recently, we just had a shooting down first.
Mr. Carroll, if I'm not mistaken, that's just a block away from you. Can anybody let me know what's going on with that? Is that an isolated thing? Is the shooter still around? You know, no mayor came out, no council person came out to talk, all right? And that's been going on all week already. People talking about that that nobody is shedding light on. Recently, I was in a store, and the fire department has a piece of paper out for hiring, okay? But for people like us, I didn't know what it said, because it's not in English. It's in Spanish, Arabic, whatever, nothing here. Can I ask why that was like that? You know, and if they do get the job, do they have to speak English? Are we going to have an interpreter from, you know, doing a fire? That's another thing is going to be. I don't have no problems with people getting jobs, believe me when I tell you, but don't put it out where there's no American thing on it. It's ridiculous. That's a shame for the fire department. Shame on him, shame on the chief, and whoever else was behind that one. Okay? The mayor said during his campaign he raised $80 million, all right? Well, if he raised $80 million, why are we, our taxes are going to be going up, 7.8%? You know, is that just another lie? Is that just to have the people believing you guys, believing the mayor? Believe me, I don't, maybe you could answer that question too, all right? And recently, in the mayor's thing during the campaign with everybody on it, all of yous have to agree to everything that's there. There was a thing out with the Nadrowski family's payroll, you know, all their salaries, all right? Okay, you know, who got a job from the mayor? The mayor gave them this job, that job. Maybe Mr. Booker could answer his question. How'd he get the job with the county over there? And what's he making over there? All right? I'd like to know that between his...
Dave, stick to government.
I am, I'm sticking through everything that was there. Now, listen, I got five minutes, so please, all right? So I really like to know what's going on there, all right? I don't see the mayor saying, "I gave Mr. Booker a job over there."
Stick to government business.
No, and I like Lloyd, Lloyd's a good friend of mine, but I am giving it to the government because I'm the taxpayer, I pay for him. I pay my share of taxes to his salary, I understand.
We're trying to be a common landlord.
Okay? Why is not the windmill still not working? All right? Can anybody tell me that? Now, we have a new company that came in that bought it. Do we get anything of the profit of what Suez got when he sold it? You know, I mean, there had to be a price to that. Okay? Wait, wait, one minute.
It wasn't sold, David.
Right? Then we have, there's a backup generator, you guys don't even know where it is, it's down the base. There's two backup generators, that if the electric went out, the generators would kick on. Maybe somebody would go down there and investigate that, since what you call, say we were getting a new one up there. We have one up there that we're renting, I don't know if we're renting that still, if we are, get rid of it, because the lights go out, it don't go on. Somebody got to turn it on. So it's ridiculous to have, all right? So maybe now, Mr. Corfey can answer that question about the sale of the...
I just wanted to correct your statement, the windmill itself was not sold.
No, I didn't say the windmill. I said Suez sold, sold their business to, was it Viallo, whatever it is?
Yielding.
Yeah, all right.
Dave, please wrap up your comments.
They're the new, they're the new, I am, they're the new people now, right? Do we get a cut of that sale?
No.
Then why not? It's ridiculous. You know, so I'm just going to leave it like that. I guess if Mr. Booker wants to call me one day or tell the public what he's making on the county level and everything else, I don't have that problem, you know, just like you, Mr. La Palusa, you got that county job through the mayor too, so, you know, the mayor pushed it out that this is what was going on, so, you know. So maybe Mr. Carroll could tell us what's going on in the first ward too.
Thank you for your comments.
Because, you know...
Now that we've reached the end of the comment, I know we have the police department in the back, but I understand there's other individuals here who want to speak to this issue, so perhaps we would hear from them and then invite the police department to come up and respond, if that's okay with the chair.
Christopher Munez?
You know, I'm sorry, Chris.
I'm going to yield my time, no, I'm kidding. Hi, I just wanted to say, well, Christopher Munez, I may have to retreat, congratulations, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Perez, and...
Council President La Palusa, on your reelections. Welcome, Councilmen Booker and Weimer. Congratulations on your election. I didn't forget about you, don't think I know, I wasn't here at the last city council meeting. My son graduated proudly from Mary J. Donahue School, thank you, on June 15th, that's why I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I'm just here to follow up on the Bowyer Project. I understand that you did pass a resolution giving the Board of Education 10% on that property, but I'm here to ask a legal question of, I guess Mr. Corfey can answer this. The 10% that was passed in the resolution, is that a legally binding resolution, or can the city...
This is a, this is public comment, it's not question.
Oh, okay, so then you know what, I'll tell you what.
You can wait afterwards.
No, 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 no problem. I'm all about speedy, efficient government.
The land losses, well...
Yeah, well, what I can do is, I have a Board of Education email, I will email you and you can send me your answer, and I'll share it with the public, I have no problem with that. I want to make sure that that is a legally binding resolution and that maybe the city's having a bad fiscal year and they decide not to give us the $3 million from that project, so I'm a little concerned about that. Just want to make sure, I've been assured by other people that that's the case because it wasn't put in a pilot format, and I just want to make sure that that's not the case, okay? The other thing I would like to say is, Mr. Carter, thank you for that memo or that tweet that came out about the overgrown weeds in the city. I know when I drive around the city, I see overgrown weeds, it's driving me crazy, so I want to say thank you for being proactive with that. But, so I, Mr. Corfey, I will email you and then I will share that, and then in August I will be back, okay, and ask more Board of Education related questions, okay? I need to take up my five minutes. Look, only two, I'm efficient. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Good to see you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Melanie Flora?
Melanie Flora, 108 East 25th Street, Bayonne. I titled my subject disregard for the taxpayers and the homeowners. Some of the stuff I said at other meetings, I'm going to go on, because it affects me almost daily. The amount of overbuilding, the noise, the parking problems in the east side area of Bayonne is clearly having an effect on the neighborhood, a negative effect. We were lied to by so-called experts, the traffic study, there would be ample parking, there is not. We were lied to by the mosque spokesperson regarding the congregation, the number of people within their congregation, the participants, and the noise. There is a lot more people, I can attest to that firsthand, both from New York and New Jersey, that was ever testified, which was not clearly testified, because they never gave a number, they gave a map count or a prayer map count, that attend this especially on a Friday. Can't get in or out, down the street, any of the streets. The police have to be called multiple times during the services, broadcasted over the speaker system. Speaker system. I emphasize that, because there was not going to be a speaker system, nor was there going to be a call-out to prayer or whatever. Making it impossible for me to hear my own TV in my own home, forget about trying to enjoy my outside yard. The most recent one, I have a listing of them, if anybody cares to look, the most recent offense was 9:00 AM Saturday, July 9th, and I have a video of the noise, which clearly is overwhelming. Police come back, and they're very good, I love the police, I love all you guys. No, I do, I really do. They come back with all the excuses. Gee whiz, we had a flood. We had it in store carpet. We had to cancel the event at the park. I really don't care. I don't buy my house to sit and not be able to hear in my own home. I mean, it's really getting to a point of being ridiculous. Why is it necessary to broadcast your services on the outside PA system? Maybe because all the people do not fit into the building? Perhaps a capacity check should be done of the amount of people within that building on any given day, especially on a Friday. I believe there's laws against that, overcapacity. Anybody can help me? Okay, the lot is full. The wall checks, building lot is full. There are wall-to-wall cars parked in everything from driveways, disabled spots, double-parked hydrants, no parking signs. There's such a disregard for the neighborhood. I remember, we're going to be great neighbors. Well, we didn't end up being great neighbors, and I'm a very angry neighbor. I'm subjected to daily constant drilling, banging, and it's not just the mosque, from approximately 7:15 PM from the 22nd Street project. Just last week, when I drove down on the back highway, I saw all black smoke coming out, and boom, boom, boom. Nobody's going to tell me that this is good for anybody's health when they're inhaling it. Also, the stench of oil, oil, and I know oil, I grew up on the east side. The stench of oil is so overwhelming, within the last three days, I had to close the few windows when I tried to get some air. The noise and the floating debris from the storage facility on 24th Street, we all know that one. It's all there. I couldn't open my pool, I've been cleared, it's the first year I opened a pool.
Melanie, can you wrap up your comments?
Yeah, five minutes, Gary, and I have 30 seconds. The mosque services are broadcasted on a loudspeaker. I realize all the building noises cannot be prevented, we will eventually build, we have to build, but can anything be done about this going forward? I mean, I live there. You don't live there, you had Lucarelli's problem up your backside, and I don't mean that disrespect for everybody, to a place you turned around, they were beating it up. Well, I have it down there, and then the next thing, we're going to have more planning, more whatever.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
Please, this is...
I have two sentences. Gary, I didn't come out here for five minutes. You threw this on us unexpectedly, that's not right.
This is a new council, new rule.
I tried to get, no, I'm going to say what I got to do. I tried, I looked at least 20 times to get the agenda. You know, it's still not on, why is that? So nobody else comes in and reads the agenda?
Melanie, this council decided to limit to five minutes.
This council didn't discuss it with us. We are the people.
We discussed it at the meeting.
I want...
It's an effort to make sure that each person is heard in time.
Neil, Neil.
You are taking the time to criticize me. When I come here with bad things... I mean, we're going to cut the speaker off next?
Yes, I am.
No, I'm just, I want to know, can repeat offenders be issued summonses for noise, i.e. PA system, which never should have existed? And by the way, this one that I'm referring to, like I gave you the date and the time, there were two other services prior to that, I didn't hear them, I was sleeping like a baby. This one woke me up, woke me up on a Saturday. I don't want to hear it. I have multiple videos, if anyone cared to look at them, listen to them, I will show. Ms. Weimer, you are now the board person? I don't know you, I'm Melanie Flora. I need to know, get this out of my way, but boy, it's like, it's like water boy torture. It's every freaking day. Thank you.
Mrs. Flora, could you just give me your phone number? In the middle. Rosemarie Bond?
Hello, Council, I'm going to make it fast. Mr. Carter, as you're doing your cleanup, can you address the dog shit? Because it's everywhere. They have destroyed Haleki Park.
We actually have something tonight.
Really?
At our council meeting.
I have bothered that man and Jackie 100 million times, they were five and six and seven signs up, nobody cares, they stick the dog underneath the gate and let the dog go over, that park's a mess. I don't mean to pick on you.
No, you're not picking on me.
Because Jackie and Mr. Carroll have been terrific with me, I'm happy. I am addressing the mosque also, because it's my neighborhood, I've talked to Jackie several times about this, she said she's going to address it. I just want to let you know, we live down a dead-end street, my husband parked stuck vertically, they parked right like that to block him in, I asked them to move. Go F yourself, ma'am. This is during Ramadan. I asked them to get out of the driveway. Who are you, ma'am? Go F yourself, excuse me, go F yourself. I have emailed the mosque with pictures, they've read it, but never addressed it. Rahid Raqbar is...
I have bothered that man and Jackie 100 million times. They were five and six and seven signs up. Nobody cares. They stick the dog underneath the gate and let the dog go over. That park's a mess. I don't mean to pick on you.
No, you're not picking on me.
Because Jackie and Mr. Cotter have been terrific with me. I'm happy. I am addressing the mosque also because it's my neighborhood. I've talked to Jackie several times about this. She said she's going to address it. I just want to let you know, um, we live down a dead-end street. My husband parked stuck verbally, vertically. They parked right like that to block him in. I asked them to move. Go F yourself, ma'am. This is during Ramadan. I asked them to get out of the driveway. Who are you, ma'am? Go fuck yourself. Excuse me, go F yourself. I have emailed the mosque with pictures. They've read it, but never addressed it. Rahid Raqbar is a liar. He promised this stuff would not go on and everything they promised has gone opposite. They are leaving my neighborhood I grew up in. I don't care. They want to pray, that's, that's their thing, but do, respect the neighborhood. That's all I care about. It's aggravating. It's upsetting. Melanie is a taxpayer. I'm her tenant. I understand why she's, she's extremely upset. I have my own issues. My issue is the parking. And they are noisy at times. I do call the cops. The cops try to do the best they can, but you can't be all over the place. So I'm just asking to please, somebody reach out to these people and address them. He told, he told us that he was going to have an open house. He was going to try to acclimate himself into the neighborhood. He hasn't done anything. So telling me to go F myself is not acceptable. That's all I got to say about that. I also want to know, these people that are moving into Bayonne, then to me, they're not residents. They are here because it's cheap rent. Are they supposed to change their license plates after a certain amount of time? Are we going to continue to see New York, Pennsylvania plates forever? Because that's all you see in Bayonne. And when they double park, they U-turn, they do anything they want in this city and it's scary. It's got my, I, I've lived here all my life and I've always talked positively about Bayonne. Unfortunately, I don't do it anymore. My husband retires, I will be moving. I hate to say that, but that's the way it's going to be. I just, Jackie, I appreciate you've called me back. She will address it, she told me, but they have to be addressed. They can't continue to do this. And they found me to F off during Ramadan, two of them. So that's, that's all I have. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Tracy O'Connell and I'm a resident in downtown Bayonne. Um, I'm also a teacher here and a parent. And I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of, um, citizens in downtown Bayonne. We are scared. We are frightened. Um, I have children and we don't hear anything. I know that a lot of people know that I went live and I posted stuff, um, but that's the only way that we're getting any type of answer. Where's the mayor? What's happening? Why isn't anyone addressing crime? We're addressing weeds. Weeds, guys. But someone was shot a block from me. That is so scary. Why is this happening? And what are you going to do about it?
Perhaps when the public comment is over, maybe we could hear from the police. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. All right, so I'll start. Uh, you know, thank you for moving the public portion to the forefront. Um, I think that's great. Residents, uh, residents shouldn't have to wait to speak. I just want to remind the council president of the freedom of speech and, uh, that this public, uh, portion of the meeting allows residents to speak openly and freely, whether or not you like it. Um, I was surprised, um, that you limited the public portion tonight to five minutes. I didn't always agree with the previous council president, but she never limited the public comment, um, and even offered a question and answer portion. I have a question. Um, you know, when you cut the mic on several residents, uh, here, I'm curious if other residents watching at home, uh, could actually hear them. Um, but I know it's not a Q and A now, new times, and, uh, so I'll move on. I'm here to really speak tonight, um, on an issue that my father, uh, you know, had been addressing. And, uh, you know, it's very hot. He's old. Um, and so I'm here to speak on his behalf. So these helicopter tour companies, um, they're flying between, uh, Country Village, 57th Street, as far over as 53rd Street where I live and can be as, uh, heard as far as 50th Street. These helicopters start, uh, as early as eight in the morning and continue up till 9:00 PM, flying every 15 minutes. Um, there's four issues that I did, uh, research on. It's bad for our city. It's bad for public health. It's bad for the environment and it's bad for the economy. Um, hundreds of residents live and work along these tourist flight paths with lax, uh, passenger screening. These helicopters pose a serious security and safety risk as well as diminishes our quality of life. The incessant and loud, non-essential helicopter flights over our homes, parks, and open spaces detract from the urban oasis residents need as a respite from busy streets. Lastly, we learned during the pandemic, it's even more important that helicopters don't disturb our airspace with residents working and studying at home. It's bad for our health because the excessive helicopter traffic creates extreme noise, which is believed to cause large range of serious physical and mental health issues. It can also impair memory, lower reading, and speech comprehension, and reduce cognitive abilities in children and adults. These helicopters are flying right over Woodrow Wilson School. With the frequency of these flights, the risk of bodily harm to residents and tourists by non-essential helicopters flying over our densely populated area is too great and a danger to allow. It's bad for our environment because each helicopter produces 950 pounds of carbon dioxide per hour. The average car produces 22 pounds per hour. Eight chapters idling on a heliport is like 340 cars idling. Fossil fuels guzzling non-essential helicopters, such as those used for these tourist, uh, joyrides, are the antithesis of environmentally friendly modes of transport. With the extreme negative impact to our climate change women from coastal cities such as us, um, you know, something must be done here. And it's bad for the economy. It's bad for our neighborhood. It's, you know, ultimately helicopter crashes disrupt business and utilize expensive emergency services. Helicopter noise likely reduces real estate values and the residents' quality of life. I could tell you as somebody working from home, it's so difficult. Uh, people think you're out, you're not in front of the computer, like literally. Um, your homes are shaking. You're getting all of that exhaust fields. Um, and it's just not fair. We're not getting any benefit when a company is flying from Carney to New York City. Um, you know, it seems like a straight path over Jersey City, but Mayor Philip doesn't want to deal with it. But I tell you what, we don't want to deal with it either. Um, the other issue that I just want to close with, it looks like, uh, you know, I ran a little, uh, uh, slow here. Uh, electric scooters, minibikes on the sidewalks going up, uh, 30 miles per hour. Uh, my father's concerned, you know, he walks the dog and, you know, he has to dodge these things. Um, it's just insane. You have to register an electric car. You should have to register an electric bike and electric scooter. They should be required to, you know, require some kind of insurance, uh, for that because God forbid if they hit somebody elderly at 25 miles an hour, we all know the studies, there's going to be serious damage. Um, so thank you, uh, you know, for the opportunity to speak this evening and, um, I hope that, you know, I wish you all luck and I hope you guys look into this, uh, issue. Um, just going back to the helicopters, I know in 2013, um, Councilman Ray Reeves reached out and Mayor Mark Smith at the time, um, they filed complaints with the FAA. But I think we have to kind of really go back to that and, and, and review it. Thank you.
Um, just so you know, on this last note, I went through Donald Payne's office a few years ago. I've been through with Mark Smith. I've been through with, because I've been here through several mayors. Could not get that stopped, could not get them to change their flight path. So I don't know what I'm going to do, but maybe I have to go through Robert Menendez's office or something to get that stopped because they're not flying at the height that they're supposed to by law. As far as the, uh, the pollution, that was never an issue brought up by constituents to me. I don't know how you stop the pollution because the airplanes are probably 100 times more than a helicopter. Well, you know, so I'm not disagreeing with you, but I wanted to let you know, I've tried to do this. I've, I've, I can't tell you how, how many hours I've exhausted on this and I'm going to try a different approach.
Thank, thank you so much. And, um, if I could just add, the pollution issue is when they're flying at 500 feet, there's a big difference when they're flying at 100 feet. And I understand...
But they're not flying 500 feet.
No, they're definitely not. And, um, you know, in, in that aspect. And, um, al- also, if I could just, uh, uh, add here...
Please, please wrap this up. I let everybody else, you know, I, I said five minutes.
No, I, I, yeah, I totally understand. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Glad you got your question answered.
Do we have anybody else?
Why didn't you answer his question but nobody else?
It was a statement. I gave a statement. And I'm also going to explain that I'm taking notes when everybody speaks and we will be working on these issues. I could speak to Jackie about what's going on in the second war with the mosque. I could speak to Juan maybe about helping me with the FAA and, uh, maybe getting Robert Menendez involved for the helicopters. You know, Melanie, we're going to work on that oil stench in the construction. Gail, we duly noted about the tax increases. The, who was the representative for the county? I'm just letting you know, we're listening.
What was the calculation?
We're listening.
What about the contract for our police? What about the hiring of firefighters and police?
So I'm going to ask now, uh, a representative from the police if they could come up and just talk a little bit about the increase in crime, which is happening all over the country, by the way.
It doesn't matter. This is Bayonne.
Listen, this is not for you to keep answering back to me. This is now, the, the police are going to come up and explain some things that are going on in the neighborhood and what they're doing about it. And they're also going to explain about the need for more policemen. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, we're going to speak specifically about the incident that happened down on First Street the other night. I'd just like to say, I totally understand the way you feel as a parent and a, a citizen. Sunday, July 17th, at approximately 3:12 AM, the Bayonne Police Department received a report of an individual, uh, shot several times down on the walkway, uh, between Gorman Field and the water. Uh, police responded. We ultimately, uh, through investigation, found out the individual had been shot at approximately 1:00 AM. It's an ongoing investigation. I'm not going to get into the details of it, but I could tell you this, it's an isolated incident. Uh, we believe the individual was targeted, meaning it was, wasn't random. We've, uh, done neighborhood campuses down there, interviews, and have reached out to several, uh, neighbors regarding, uh, their surveillance cameras and stuff like that. And, uh, to the one that, I don't know if you're the one who posted online, but there's one that, uh, if you watch it, it, it sounds like several shots in the background. That's around 80 Kennedy Boulevard and that was not gunshots. Uh, we received a call of fireworks and we had police respond, spoke to the caller, spoke to the individual, and there was evidence of fireworks at that area.
Thank you so much for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Because no one else has even tried, you know? Thank you so much.
No, you're welcome. Uh, in furtherance of this investigation specifically, we've coordinated with the New Jersey State Police Regional Operations and Intelligence Center, the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office, and the Jersey City Police Department. Now, that's the investigation itself. After the incident occurred, um, I ensured that we increased patrols in the area overtly, uh, with marked police units in the area, uh, uniformed parking walks. I've personally gone down there myself several times and walked around with Sergeant Rhodes, uh, of the Community Relations Office. Uh, we've also increased our covert presence, meaning we have plainclothes individuals out there.
Is that going to continue or is it...
It is. It's, it is into the foreseeable future, uh, and, um, unmarked vehicles. We also put a, uh, we have remote surveillance down there. We have a video trailer camera in the area. Um, and I just want to say, this incident happened in a, an area that was blocked off by a construction gate where someone shouldn't have been in the first place.
But you could still park right there.
Oh, you could park right there and you just moved the gate out of the way and go back there.
So do you feel that it's safe for me to walk my daughter in the park?
At any time?
Not in the middle of the night. She's only two. So between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, the police are around. We've increased the presence down there. I have the police supervisors down there, uh, to, uh, increase the patrols. Uh, and if there's ever, uh, an issue, you have a question, a comment, a concern, I'll speak to you outside before you leave. I'll give you my number. Sergeant Rhodes.
Um, how many policemen are on patrol, like at any time?
We don't, we don't give that information out. I know someone called the police department and requested it. Maybe it was you. Uh, we don't speak to specifics on how we deploy our officers throughout the...
And what about the weekends? I heard there's all ruckus on the weekends down there. Is there patrols taking place, especially on the weekends at night when the, when the terminals close and everything? They're all hanging out down there?
Yeah, you know what? In the summer, we, we, we try to give a little leeway, uh, to individuals who want to enjoy the parks, especially along the water. That's kind of going away. Uh, we're going to adopt, uh, a zero tolerance policy at park closing time, which is usually dawn to dusk, but I believe in the summer it might be 8 o'clock. Is there a timeframe on it?
When do parks close at dusk?
So, um, you know, if people are down there walking along the, the water, you might get asked to leave. The people hanging out in the parking lot, absolutely not. That's not happening. We, the police department, I'm sure the, the parks department, we don't want to get to the point where they have to put the gate or a chain because the residents use that for additional parking and we don't want to go that route.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just to the gun issue in town, uh, the Bayonne Police Department has been doing its part. Uh, in 2021, we recovered, uh, approximately 30 firearms off the streets between arrests and community guns. And so far this year, we've retrieved, uh, eight, uh, eight firearms. Uh, so we're out there doing our job, doing it aggressively.
I don't think that I, that, I just want to clarify this. I wasn't saying that you, that no, that the police officers weren't. I think they are. I think it's the administration that's not doing their job with just letting us know if something's safe or just letting us know what's going on. But, uh, for you, thank you for clarifying everything.
Well, I just want to tell you what we're doing, yeah. But we, we also appreciate the, the public's help, especially here in town. Uh, Neighborhood Watch, we like to, to be one with the community. Uh, also afterwards, we'll get you Sergeant Rhodes' number if you ever need anything. But what I would like to tell you now, uh, if anybody has any information about that incident or they want to tell us, to contact the main, um, phone number, 858-201-858-6900 or 6925, which is the Detective Bureau. You could submit information via an email form at bayonpd.com. Uh, and then we have two confidential ways you can submit information. 1-877-900-TIPS or you could text TIPBPD. That's confidential. And give us the information and let us connect the dots. That's how we do our job. Uh, we also have one valuable tool for our investigations, a video, uh, camera registry, where if you have a ring doorbell or surveillance cameras on the outside of the house, you could register with us. Uh, and we're not going to monitor your, uh, your, um, cameras, but if something happens in your area, we may reach out and say, hey, can we check your cameras? And that'll help us, uh, with our investigations and forward and expedite our investigations to, you know, get it to a successful conclusion quickly.
Thank you.
Sir? Yeah, any, anything else?
No, I think that's very good, but, but I think if you can also address Ms. Flora's request about the mosque and how many times the police have been there and what can we do?
First I'm hearing it, I...
And sir, wait, before, do you mind if I interrupt? I apologize. I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Behind you. No worries. And before, before we go to that issue, which, which I think is a, a serious issue as well, but before we do that, can you just explain what the police department's general practices for communicating to residents?
for communicating to residents? So we were, I received the alert that there was a shooting, but I too didn't receive anything more after that. So I'm, I'm just asking, what is, what is our general practice on communicating to residents outside of, of public media and news? Do we have one?
Short term, we, we do a media release as soon as it happens. You may have seen something on NJ.com. We put a media list out. That's something occurred. And it's usually still in the early stages of an investigation, so we can't put out too many details. As time goes on, see, even tonight, I gave you very basic information.
Right.
And that's what you would get up until.
We understand it's an investigation.
It culminates in an arrest.
Right.
Sure.
So what can the community be expected to receive? What, what can the outside of coming here, which obviously the residents had to wait, that occurred earlier in July, so they had to wait an entire week or so before they would receive any additional information?
They can reach out to the police department, my office, the office of the deputy chief, or Sergeant Steve Rhodes, the Community Relations. You can contact us by the email form. We're very attentive to stuff like that.
I know that you guys are, yeah. I think that it's.
If you have questions.
I think that for you to send a voice, you know, like for you to make an automated call to us when there's two inches of snow and then no one alerts us that there was a shooting in the park and it's okay to be outside, that's concerning.
Yeah, a robo-call, like she said. A robo-call or OEM flash to, you know, a text from OEM, something to let us know that it's okay.
Okay.
You know, because people are locking their doors, you know, they don't know.
Scared.
We're scared.
Hey, I think Jay, well, the head.
If I can, Joe and I have talked about this stuff in the past. There, there can be a gap of time when the police are doing what they have to do and don't want to have people alerted to the fact that they're doing what they have to do. So it's a delicate dance for us when we talk to the police department, when can we notify, what should we put out? They have to do, like, firecrackers go off, people are talking, it's gunshots, they wouldn't do an investigation. We don't want to confirm gunshots.
Well, we know that there were gunshots when there's cases.
Well, I'm just talking about how this happens, where word gets out and misinformation gets out. So if we're going to put out an official.
That's why it's so important to send it out right away. Like, can I just say one thing? I'm a teacher, so the superintendent, if something happens, he doesn't want all of us to go crazy. He sends us an alert right away and says, everything is okay. This happened. As soon as we have more information, we'll let you know.
Exactly.
We're not, we don't feel we're okay. We're inside. I mean, I go out very early for a walk. I was there at 7 o'clock in the morning at the park, and there were cops there and there was tape. And I was, I was, I didn't know that this was happening. I just thought it had something to do with maybe somebody snuck in at the park, you know, that's being built. I was there, and afterwards, I was so scared. It's not right.
I, I don't, I don't know that we're ever going to fix that, that little time period where the police and.
We didn't hear anything for over 48 hours.
Understood. But I'm just.
I understand.
Alert you to the fact that we have to have deference to the police with respect to them doing the investigation. And then you also have the curious people that come down, they hear that something happened, they drive down, it gets in the way of their investigation. But I do think maybe we'll have a sit-down about communication between the administration and the police department and getting something out a little earlier.
And as you just saw, and as I spoke to her earlier, the video of the.
Right.
Thing, shots fired, and then social media takes over.
Right.
That's a whole other issue. We will, I'll have a discussion with Mr. Coffey. We will try to put out some sort of, a critical incident notification. But on the same token, we're not looking to panic everybody in town.
Right, but we were panicked. We were so panicked.
And please, in the future, and you might have been reluctant to call at the time.
We did call the police department, and a lot of people had, just kept putting us to the next person, to the next person, to the next person, and they said, I can't comment right now.
Exactly.
And then I said, is it safe to go into the park? And they said, we can't comment. So that's my answer.
Well, it was very early. It was very early in the incident.
But that happened Saturday into Sunday? This is Monday we called. We called Monday. You know, it's, it's really scary to be like that for such a long time and not know, are they coming back? Is this a retaliation? Was this just that they want to, like, are their gangs down? Like, we know. We don't know anything.
Well.
We just think, and then it panics.
For me to get this information at this time that it was targeted and not a random incident, we didn't know that.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but just to say it's okay.
And we, we don't want to put out false information.
Yeah.
And either cause panic or give you a false sense of security.
Sure.
At the same time. So that's why.
Something has to.
We don't.
The answer's vague.
We just put out that something happened.
Right.
Through the media, and we get that out as soon as we can.
Chief, we have one question from.
Chief Scarborough, yeah. It's in reference to Title 39. Two, two questions came here in reference to Title 39. The first one was the changing of the plates when you move from another state. Is it still 30 days?
I believe it is, yes. And that's if they move. These could be rental vehicles that the people are using in town, they could be borrowing a car, or they could be visiting. But that's if they change residency to this state.
If they live here in Bayonne or any.
In New Jersey.
In New Jersey. The second question is about those scooters. On the Title 39, do they have to register them?
It has to do with the size of the scooter. And that's all governed by the state whether it has to be registered and insured. The ones that you see zipping around, believe it or not, a lot of them don't have to be registered or insured, and they don't have to wear, no, they do have to wear helmets. I take that back. Even with the gas ones, it has to do with the amount of cc's of the engine, whether it has to be registered or insured. Nobody should be riding on a sidewalk. And if you have complaints or you see, who said something about the scooters? I'm sorry.
Frank.
Oh, it's gone? Call, call the police. We'll come out because we don't want the scooter to cause a motor vehicle accident or hit a pedestrian on a sidewalk. Let us deal with it, and then we'll figure it out.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
What about the hiring? What about the hiring of new officers?
Chief, I appreciate the time you took to come up here and answer these questions. I also appreciate the time you took with me in the aftermath of the incident. I put out a statement. I understand it might not have been as acceptable to some, but it was in an effort not to create further panic, and again, I thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
This one's Alan Lenz of Gail. Our question about the hiring. We have a class at the academy now, and we're starting another class for October. All the academies were closed for two years because of the pandemic. Most of them, you can only get eight to 10 people in at a time, and the whole state's trying to get officers into these academies, and they're all just full, backed up. But whenever there's an opening, we try and fill it. So we have a class in there now, and another class we're processing now to start in October.
So, so in the meantime, can you utilize county police because that's what Jersey City does?
We do all the time. We call them all the time. We call the sheriff's office all the time for the parks. They do the parks for us. If we have an incident on a boulevard, we call them, or any, we use them quite a bit.
But in Jersey City, they're given Jersey City uniforms. Do they get Bayonne Police uniforms to help you guys out? Because you definitely need help.
Help what guys out?
The county. The county.
The county has their own uniforms.
Yeah, but if they're assigned to Jersey City, they get to wear Jersey City cops?
No, that doesn't happen, never.
No, it's always a sheriff's uniform.
Okay, so, so are we just, are we utilizing them for the minor things? Or?
We utilize it for everything. We utilize it for traffic. We utilize them for criminal incidents. If we need them, we call them, and they're always there for us.
Okay, all right.
But it's not that often we have to call them. We don't call them that often. But if it's a major incident, we'll reach out to them. We're, if we're short, we have a couple of major incidents going on at one time, we'll reach out to them, and they, if they have the personnel, they send them. We call Jersey City. They send people also. We send people to Jersey City. We work like that. And the fire department too. We, we have, we're doing the hiring now, and as far as the, is Dave still here? No. As far as the languages, that's a directive by the Attorney General's Office. We have to reach out to all the communities that are in the city. We have to advertise it like that. I read them in English, so they're out there in English. So, but we, we have to do that, and it is the right thing to do. We've hired numerous fire, firemen, men, women, and police officers, police women, and of all nationalities, it's something, we have to reach out. Now, we want to reach out. We want to represent the community.
So are we hiring more firemen?
Yes, that's what the ads are in the paper for.
Okay, but do you have anybody in line ready to go? Because these guys need help too. With the building.
I think they're doing pretty good. Bart, what do you think?
There's a process to hire. We have to, from a big list, it just, just came higher. So we're in a process. It takes several months for it to develop, and whatever the city and council and the public safety director, they'll guide us through the process, but we can't get it higher.
If there's openings in the academies, we try and fill them. But like I say, they were all closed for two years. We couldn't get anybody in there. Now they just opened up about, what, six, eight months ago? And everybody has a waiting line, a tremendous waiting line to get in the academies throughout the state. We're using Ocean County, Atlanta County. We're sending them all over. But it's.
Same thing with the fire. We only use the academies at their times, and it's typically March when the weather breaks until October. But once it gets cold, obvious reason, because below water, it'll freeze, so we only have a short time. And the director is spot on. During COVID, everything was shut down. So now we're backed up two years, and it's going to take a couple of years to get that correction. And the question on the, we have it posted on the city's website, social media, we have message boards. We have it on the city's whiteboard, front page of the test announcement. And we also have the companies going out there, and they do the Spanish and the English flyers at the same time. Somebody might have took that flyer.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yes, the business, the public safety, they don't open that business, so it seems to be very popular.
Maybe to get more, more people to apply, have a referral program. Our officers and firefighters can refer people, and you can get.
We get, we get more than enough though, Tom.
Okay.
It's getting them into the academy.
Good.
And we only have a certain amount of money to spend too. You know, we can't just hire 500 cops, 500 firemen. We'd love to, but you know, the money is limited, and we hire what we can. It's, you know, just the way it is. Right now, I think we're, we're doing all right.
That's a priority, Director. It's a priority, so we should spend the money.
It is a priority, and if it's a priority in the city, the city pays attention to that. We have more cops and firemen than we do anybody else in the city.
How many police officers do we have in the city?
You have a one-to-one.
Roughly 180.
How many?
180.
And how many out of that 180 are retiring?
Over the last two years, we lost probably, what, 30 or 40?
Yes.
Yeah.
How many, how many below sergeant level? How many are there?
About 90, 100.
If, yeah. If these questions are detailed and put into an email and sent to any one of us, we will direct it to the director and ask that they respond to the constituents.
And there was, there was a question about the crime rate before, I don't know who, I don't know, you asked it, Gail?
Yes, sir.
The crime rate went down for seven years straight. Last year, it went up a little over 1%, 1%. And it was sexual assaults, and we had the two murders. Sexual assaults were all, except for one, were domestic violence related. The other one was not a street incident. It was a, two people knew each other, but they weren't cohabiting or married, so it wasn't technically domestic violence.
The director with.
The murders were all people that knew each other. We don't live in a vacuum. There's guns out there.
Yes.
I don't know if you read the papers every day or look online, but just the other day, Friday, we had two horror officers, Corrado Di Fincenzo and Bobby Cavanaugh, just riding down Avenue C, 25th and C. There's a known gang member talking to some other kids. He just all of a sudden perked up and looked nervous. They stopped, checked him out. 17 years old, carrying two guns.
I know.
Two guns. They're out there.
And Director, with all due respect, over the past two months, crime has increased. I mean, things that are not even on the internet yet, there were rapes, there was domestic violence.
Domestic violence takes up almost all of our time.
I know, I know. But that's why I'm saying we need more heroes. We need more.
But you know, in reality, let's be real.
Okay, let's, everybody, if you have something to say to the director, please come up to the microphone if you're going to speak. Stephanie?
I understand, everybody knows who I am, so we're not even going to do that.
You're supposed to say your name and address, please.
My name is Stephanie Glover Wilson, 1050 Avenue C, Hunger Free, you got it right now. In reality, Gail, when I was growing up, everybody wanted to be a cop or firefighter. These kids don't want that.
Stephanie, speaking to the mic.
Oh, sorry. These kids don't want that. I know the community officer, Mr. Rhodes, he sets up tables every place he go. These kids don't want to sign the warrant. So how are we supposed to put people in jobs if you have kids from 18 to 25 that either A, on drugs, have a record, can't qualify? Where are we going to find the people at?
Yeah, but the director said that there's already a huge list of people to choose from.
Yeah, it's already a huge list, but they have to go through training. They can't get a list tomorrow and be hired on Friday. So it's not going to happen overnight.
Chief Barto said the same thing. You're right.
It's not going to happen overnight, so let's get back into reality. Let's stop watching television and know that it's not going to happen overnight.
All right. All right, so now, directed, thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call to answer one more question, our planner, our city planner, Suzanne Mack, who's going to talk about the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you so much for having me. I have my mask on. Hi, so I just, I just don't know if you can hear me, so I'm going to use the mic. I'm Suzanne Mack. I handle some of the grants for the city of Bayonne, and I had an opportunity to meet with Council President La Palusa and the mayor this week. I think we have good news. When we talk about the 32nd Street Bridge, it's actually, it's the 34th Street Bridge, but it's just there. And what we have to understand is, it is not a city bridge. It is a bridge over a state highway. That is Route 440 that's there. So if we wanted to go out and, you know, call up and spend some money, bond, and then pay for it by the.
Excuse me, Ms. Mack, I was asking about the 32nd Street, not the Walkaway Bridge, 34th Street, 32nd Street Bridge.
There is no 32nd Street Bridge.
Yes, there is.
For vehicles, you're talking, and it's also pedestrian on the side.
It's pedestrian and dry. 32nd Street. Avenue E, over the bridge to Stop and Shop, and to Michael's and.
Oh, okay. There is no project for 32nd Street, so.
That's not what I heard.
There is a 34th Street Bridge over 440, which we have been working on, which we've awarded the contract to T. Lynn. I don't know what, we don't have, there's never been a 32nd Street Bridge. 32nd Street is a street that comes.
Somebody mentioned 34th Street, which is why I asked her to come up.
No, 32nd Street, Director Carter can clarify. He knows exactly what I'm talking about, about the status.
32nd Street is a street which comes from Avenue.
He's talking about bridges that goes from Avenue E that connects.
Over the railroad tracks.
Right.
And Director Carter, are you aware of any project that's ever been approved for that?
Not that's been approved. We could apply.
No, so the 32nd Street Roadway Bridge, we did discuss with New Jersey DOT and New Jersey Transit the fact that the bridge, obviously, when you come over, it's a difficult bridge to come over, but that is not, that is, DOT has not come back to us on that bridge. I thought you were talking about the 34th Street Bridge, which is active.
Can you just finish your comments on the 34th Street Bridge?
Yeah, so the 34th Street Bridge, which, there have been residents' requests on this. New Jersey Transit has a 34th Street pedestrian lot, the lot there, and there has been an active project to have a bridge come from that parking lot over to Moppy and therefore, you know, allow safe passage of residents to use that as a pedestrian bridge. And we've been working with New Jersey DOT, New Jersey Transit, and under the guidance of the Council President and Mr. Coffee, who's had to do a great deal of paperwork on that because of the federal regulations, we are, this week, I think Mr. Carter and Mr. Coffee have a contract. We went out to RFP to bid, and Thailand Engineering from Rockaway was awarded the bid, and we have a contract for that. And they're, we're going to have a kickoff meeting within the next two weeks on that bridge. I'm just, Gail, I'm sorry, I don't know about.
That's okay. Director Carter knows. I just want to know what the status of the meeting was for the 32nd Street Bridge as we discussed.
On that, that was when the state was offering money for bridges. We were, can you hear me?
Sure.
Oh, okay. And we were on a Zoom call, and there was guidelines that were set up, and then we were supposed to let them know what bridges that we were interested in have work being done. We submitted an application. Now, the state has that, how long that takes.
And Mr. Carter is correct on that, because this, the, under this federal program now, because of COVID, there's been more funds being made available. They're being made available to the state of New Jersey, and they did solicit from the city of Bayonne our interest in what they would like us, what they could do for us, and we have not heard back from them on that. But I believe the police department made a very strong case, Lieutenant Conte made a very strong case on the fact that he felt that that was a priority for us to do. We're waiting on that one. At least the 34th Street Bridge, we now have, and I'm sure, you know, people are interested in that. There's going to be a kickoff meeting on that in the next two weeks. And the nice thing about that project is they're going to demand that we have a very extensive outreach program for the citizens built right into the program. They're going to set the website, they're going to solicit input, and we're going to at least have one bridge over Route 440, which is very important to the safety of the residents of Bayonne.
With all due respect, Ms. Mack, thank you for that information. However, the 32nd Street Bridge has, should have been a priority for the city for 10 years. It's fallen apart. It needs to be fixed. And we, just because infrastructure money is coming in from the feds to the state now, now everybody's trying to get money? We should have had that done five, six years ago. God forbid a kid goes over there with a bike and falls on that rusted railing. God forbid, we'll have another lawsuit on our hands. That's why I'm concerned. I go over that bridge every single day. It's a disgrace. Thank you.
And, Gail, now that you've explained this to me, that it's not the 45th Street Bridge, before the end of the week, I will be on the phone with New Jersey DOT to find a status so that I can come back through our Council President to report on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mack.
Thank you. Ms. Medina?
Can we just update what's going on with the 25th Street Bridge?
What was that?
Can we update what's going on with the 25th Street Bridge?
I don't know if, do we have an update on the 25th Street Bridge?
I have something of an update. So there has been extensive delay with progress on the 25th Street Bridge. And that bridge does affect a lot of people. I live on there, on Prospect Avenue as well, on that side of town, and we have a tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic that uses that bridge regularly. So I do understand the severity of the problem. The issue is that we're not working solely within the city of Bayonne or with our contractor. We are working with outside agencies, we're working with Conrail, we're working with Verizon, we're working with several different agencies, and I've only recently learned that we received a federal mandate that anyone taking part in that project had to take part in a federal safety course to remove and relocate any and all wires on that bridge before the state would allow us to progress. So as far as I understand it, Mr. Attorney Coffee can correct me if I'm wrong, as far as I understand it, the bridge in and of itself is ready to be installed. We're at, we've reached a little bit of a stall because we can't move any further. One, we had to get, we had to have all of those virgin, all of those agencies, excuse me, work together. We had to have, receive approval from Conrail, from AT&amp;T, from the cable Verizon and Altis, thank you, Jay, and get their approval to even move forward and work on the project before we could go ahead and progress any further. So as far as I understand, and Jay, again, correct me if I'm wrong, recently, that safety course that had to be taken by all parties involved, they were made aware. I believe they are progressing through that because it's more than one person, I'm certain it's multiple people that had to take that course. Once that has been completed and we receive a release from the state that we can move forward, we will do so.
And my understanding, based upon the latest correspondence, is that there is, the courses are taking place this week. Altis and Verizon are taking the courses this week and next, and that hopefully, two weeks from now, we'll have our final clearance, they'll have their educational requirements met, and then the city can move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Medina?
These items are ordinances up for introduction. There is no public hearing at this meeting. The first ordinance is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 4 filming, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chamber as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Mr. Carroll. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the introduction, Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, two is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 5 Animal Control, and it's a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's seconded by Ms. Weimer. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, three is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Mr. Carroll. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, four is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 11 Police Department. It is moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, five is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 21 Health Regulations, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
And ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage.
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, six, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Weimer. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, eight has been withdrawn. Oh, nine is an ordinance adopting, adopting the H Street Rehabilitation Redevelopment Plan 2015 and adopting said redevelopment plan for the Bayonne Housing Authority project pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, 10 is an ordinance referring to the redevelopment plan, referring the redevelopment plan to the planning board for consistency review for the redevelopment for the property located at 69-73 La Fonte Way and adopting said redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and a resolution fixing August 17th as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage.
So move.
Okay, you used that voice over there. Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C-1 through C-10. Are there any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Officers' reports is moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within them to be adopted. It covers OR-1 through OR-3. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officers' report, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Consent resolutions is moved by the council as a whole. It's a resolution ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR-1 through CR-20, and CR-11 and CR-18 have been removed, withdrawn completely. Any questions on the consent resolutions?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one? So I can pull it up.
CR-13.
Okay. Just hang on one second. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so on the consent resolutions without CR-13, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Okay, come on up, Gail.
Increasing allowable bid threshold to $44,000 before going to bid. I would like to know why. The bidding process is a way to ensure equal access to contracts and work to all businesses, but more importantly, it ensures that they, own taxpayers, get the best prices for its services. Seems like, in my opinion, another way to pad pocket and handpick developers, law firms, et cetera. I would like to ask our elected council, what is the benefit for the residents of Bayonne by doing this? With respect.
He's.
With all due respect, Jay, I'm asking the elected officials.
And I believe that the Council President has deferred to me to answer the question because it's a legal question.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The state of New Jersey sets the public contracting law. State of New Jersey has increased the allowable sum to $44,000 for those municipalities with a qualified purchasing agent. We have a qualified purchasing agent. Every time they raise it, I think, even when I had blond hair, I think it was like $17,000 when I started, and it went up to 23, then 32, now we're at $44,000, which in the scheme of things is a lot of money for me and you, but when you're talking about contracts, it's not a lot of money. So essentially, the state has said, we're okay with the fact that up to $44,000, the QPA should have the ability to issue contracts without having to get municipal council approval because those are the smaller contracts in the scheme of things. So this is a statutory.
For example?
If we wanted to buy $30,000 worth of hats for Al Sullivan, she would be able to go out to solicit three different quotes from three different providers and not have to put it out for an RFP.
Okay, and the council does not have to approve that? She could do that on her own?
In fact, our council does do that. As a matter of course, the municipal council has pretty much approved every contract, but it would not necessitate the need to go out for bid under local public contracts law. There's a bidding law, there are several laws that come into play. At $17,500, you have to worry about pay to play. At $44,000, you have to worry about whether or not you have to go out for bid. There are 26 exceptions and then some subparts to the local public contracts law, open public bidding. So there are all these exceptions, and the state is cognizant of the fact that the smaller contracts, it would probably cost more money in professional fees to develop RFPs to go out for, I'm sorry, to develop the bid documents than it would for the actual contracts. So $44,000 is a statutory limit that the state of New Jersey says anybody with the QPA, any municipality with a QPA can go up to, and we're just moralizing that we're going to follow that.
Well, thank you for the explanation. I have total faith in Amy that she'll do a good job.
And on CR-13, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa? I did it twice. Mr. Perez, I missed you, I'm sorry.
Aye.
I'm used to the names going a certain way, and I have to get used to that. By August, we'll be okay. OR-1 is a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez authorizing a modification to the 2012 concession agreement with Bayonne Water Joint Venture LLC to provide for additional geotechnical testing in connection with the Bayonne Water Supply Aqueduct Directional Drilling Project. And Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And any questions on OR-1? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
OR-2 is moved by Councilmember La Palusa authorizing the modification to the 2012 concessions agreement with the Bayonne Water Joint Venture to provide for emergency generations at various sewage pump stations to comply with an informational request and administrative compliance order issued to the city by the EPA with the terms and conditions of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pollutant discharge permit associated with the city's combined sewer system. Who'd like to second?
Second.
And any questions on OR-2? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
OR-3 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to lease or purchase a 2022 Sparta Metro Star fire engine from Sparta Motors USA through the Houston-Galluston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Plan for a total of $586,330.
So move.
One second.
I have a question.
Sure. Come on up.
What's best for the city, lease or purchase? Somebody has to make a decision.
No, actually, you can, through the magic of modern finance, you can do a lease-purchase option.
Yes.
Which is what we're going to do.
Okay, so should that, so.
No, there's another resolution at the end of this that will tie in the lease-purchase aspect.
Okay, thank you.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R4 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with McManaman Scotland Embowelment LLC for professional legal services, including but not limited to legal representation of the city in all matters in connection with the city's water sewer utility or appearance on behalf of the city to assist or supplement the efforts of the law department in such other diverse municipal law matters. It's for a period of six months, beginning July 1st through December 31st, for an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Some move.
One second.
Second.
I have a question. Or a statement.
This sounds like to me, and maybe I need clarification again, but it sounds like we're outsourcing our law department. We have competent attorneys on staff to handle city business, and they are full-time roles, I believe. Or are they part-time? As I know, there are other duties from their own businesses and other obligations. But are they full-time or are they part-time? And what are their actual working hours? And we're hiring another attorney firm, a very expensive one, to do our business. So why are we doing this? Can I please have some sort of clarification?
Yes. This company is very, very familiar with water and sewer, and so it's their expertise that we're basically hiring them for. Whereas Jay Coffey only has so much expertise in the water and sewer, we need to hire the professionals that can represent us the best.
And in fact, Gail, when I wasn't here, and the concession agreement was entered into with Suez at that time, this is the firm, essentially, they were there on the ground floor. They were representing the city of Bayonne when this document was created. There's nobody that has more inherent knowledge about this contract, how it was negotiated, how it was formulated, than McManaman Scotland.
So does this mean that the city is finally going to work on all the expenses for our water and sewer bills to the residents? Or is this something, a separate issue?
Well, I think the purpose of this is to ensure that our position is protected and our financial investment is maximized, or actually minimized, and that we're holding them to the benefit of the bargain that was negotiated back in 2012.
Okay, and I believe, Madam Clerk, you said for six months commencing July 1st through December 31st. Will that be ongoing?
Well, all of our contracts, and we try to have 100% end at the end of the year, we have a calendar year. So September, October, November, you'll be seeing RFPs going out for entities, professional entities, to submit their benefices to us so that we can hire again. The guess would be, the reasonable expectation would be that they would submit when we ask them to submit, and the council will make the decision along with the administration as to whether or not the six months, the past six months, did what they thought we would do.
And who would be their watchdog? Somebody from the council or administration making sure that they're doing what we're paying them for?
Well, I think that goes two ways. The administration and the municipal council can call them in and ask for an update.
Well, I hope somebody would call them in and ask for an update if we're paying $75,000. I would hope so. Thank you.
And, anybody else? On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R5 is awarding a contract to Atlantic County Harley-Davidson for the purchase of four electric glide motorcycles or equivalent for the bid price of $90,041.78.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R6 is awarding a contract to Municipal Inspection Corp. For onsite agency acting as elevator subcode official for a period of three-year initial contract term commencing September 1, 2022, through August 31, 2025, with a mutually agreed two-year extension through August 31, 2027, at no cost to the city.
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
I did it again, Mr. Perez, actually, I'm sorry. Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Now council president. I say aye.
Aye.
You're always supposed to go last.
Okay, aye.
Even though you're the L. R7 has been withdrawn. R8 is a conditionally designating Atlantic Cement Realty LLC as the redevelop of the property located at 6 Commerce Street, identified as Block 481 Lots 5.02 and 5.04, and authorizing the city to execute a consent to the filing of the site plan of application pertaining to this property. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R9 is authorizing payment to Public Service, PSENG, in the amount of $84,706 for the construction of new electrical lines and poles at the Dennis P. Collins Park.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R10 has also been withdrawn. R11 is the introduction of the 2022 local municipal budget and fixing Wednesday, August 17, at 7:00 PM, and at Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage.
Some move.
One second?
Second.
And on R11, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R12 is correcting the resolution for the transfer of the financial agreement and the redevelopment agreement from Pearview Lofts Urban Renewal LLC to Parkview Realty Urban Renewal 3 LLC, and reauthorizing the transfer of the financial agreement and the property project redevelopment designation and redevelopment agreement for the location at 676-684 Avenue E.
Move it.
Second.
Excuse me, what property is that?
It's the old Dune's property. I guess we should skip address and just do names of places that have closed, it's easier that way.
It would be helpful, it would be helpful.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R13 is renaming the street between First and Second Street and Avenue C as Jada's Way. It's moved by the council as a whole. And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R14 is authorizing a study to conduct an absorption rate of the number of redevelopment units built and the occupation of such units. Who'd like to second?
Second.
Could I ask also that Mr. Coffey read that into the record? That particular resolution, as we called for it at the caucus meeting?
I have a question. During the caucus meeting, Ms. Weimer asked a very important question about a specific study relating to traffic and impact for Board of Education, and she was told, I believe from Jay, that that's a totally different study. Why isn't that type of study being done? I'm sorry, but come on, guys, enough already. We need to do the appropriate impact studies before moving forward. And Jay, I don't want you to answer. Let the council elected officials answer. They should know the answer to these questions before they even come out here. It's on the agenda. I'm sure it was discussed. She had a valid point. What's going to be done?
When we defer to the experts, they give the expert opinion that's needed.
Well, I didn't hear you defer.
I'm deferring this to Jay, but I'm explaining to you why. Because he gives the legal opinions of things that we don't know, all the laws. That's why I referred to Jay.
You don't need Gary. Honestly, I'm a layperson. I have two degrees. I don't need an expert degree to know that we need specific impact studies in this city before we start building over and over and over again. Enough!
Gail, if you take it in steps, if it turns out this initial absorption study says these units are lying foul, they're empty, they're not being rented up, there's no reason to go to the next level, because you wouldn't need it. I'm going to read this in full, if it's the council's determination, I'm going to read it in full. Whereas the city of Bayonne has undergone a period of substantial commercial and residential real property growth since 2014, and whereas real estate investors have determined that the city of Bayonne is a worthwhile place within which to promote the construction of multi-unit residential dwellings, and whereas while the city of Bayonne has benefited greatly from this development, particularly on the eastern half of the city, it has come time to develop empirical data in order to determine whether or not the residential dwelling units being built are actually being rented, sold, and/or utilized. And whereas the administration has called for a pause on new residential development until such time as this empirical data is gathered and analyzed in the form of an absorption study, whereas the city's tax collector, tax assessor, redevelopment council, real estate value and valuation expert, and financial analysts will be called upon to gather the data necessary to complete such a study, and whereas the municipal council agrees with the administration that an absorption study is necessary at this juncture if the city of Bayonne is to intelligently approach and analyze the need for future similar development, now therefore be it resolved that this municipal council firmly supports this pause in new residential development until such time as the administration is able to develop and provide an absorption study that sets forth at a minimum, A, the total number of new residential dwelling units in multiple dwelling developments built in the city of Bayonne after January 1, 2015; B, the number of said units that are actually occupied; C, the number of units that are unoccupied; D, the number of new units that are expected to come online in multi-unit developments over the next 24 months; E, the amount of tax and/or other revenue realized by the city of Bayonne as a result of multi-unit residential development completed after January 1, 2015; and finally, F, the amount of tax and/or other revenue the city would have realized if these properties were not developed. I think at that point, once you have all that data, you can then determine whether you want to dive deeper into school-aged children, parking impacts, et cetera. Now, we did have an ordinance that was passed, I think in 2000, I don't remember the exact date, that for any of these residential developments, multi-unit residential developments, they wouldn't, they'd have to provide parking, and those that purchased there can't use street parking. They're not going to get...
That's not happening, you know that.
No, I think the answer is, there has to be...
They can't get parking.
Yeah, they can't get a parking permit. So it's a matter of enforcement, not, it's not happening. And then I think the second mindset that has to be changed is, some of these developers are coming in and saying, "Okay, Gail, you want to pay $2,000 a month for rent, okay? And it's $100 extra a month for parking." Gail's being smart, and for example, she says, "Well, I can park on the street for nothing and save myself 1,200 bucks a year." Problem with that is, you're essentially parking illegally on the street if you're parking during certain hours. So the real answer is to incorporate the rental for the parking spot into the base rent. Then the tenant is not getting a bargain by parking on the street. You want to incentivize them to park in their own units. So there's a mindset that has to be changed.
How long is this study going to take? You said 24 months?
No, 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 60 to 90 days. It's 24 months, what we're expecting, okay, we are a finite number now, we know this many were built, this many are occupied, this many are unoccupied.
But they're still being built.
We can't just stop places in the middle of their buildings. So we have to calculate then, how many of these other in-progress developments are going online at this point? How many can we expect, how many units do we expect in the next 24 months? Because if we find out that 30% of the units are not rented, why do we, what's the great beck and call for more residential units? If they're not being filled? If it turns out that they're 100% occupied, that would justify why these things are getting built, and then we have to determine the impact on the city, and that's where you go to the second part, as Councilwoman Weimer said, you need to dive deeper into the numbers to figure out what is the impact on our school system, what's the impact on our life.
And I also hope that Director of Safety will get this report as well, because that also impacts our security and safety of the residents of Bayonne as well. Not just schools, I mean, I don't mean to say not just schools. Schools, et cetera, et cetera. So that's very, very important. And I hope that the residents will be able to see that report before you make any other kinds of decisions. I think it's imperative that we actually see the findings.
I think the whole purpose of having the report prepared is to present it to the municipal council and to the members of the administration.
We'll report the findings.
Well, not just the administration and the council, the residents of Bayonne. It should be put in the newspaper, what the findings were.
Well, we'll report it to the public at the public meeting.
Okay, and you still owe me an answer to the question regarding the county budget, just to let you know.
And on R14, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
I have a couple of add-ons.
I have a question about that. I thought you guys decided not to have any add-ons after a certain date.
If you notice on the agenda, it says to be added. There's nothing coming at me at this meeting. It's all given to me prior. That's what we were trying to avoid.
So they're doing it the right way?
Yes.
Okay, just want to check.
Add 1 is ratifying and affirming the actions of the city's CDBG administrator in authorizing Schindler Elevator Corporation to repair the elevator at the Bayonne Family Community Center pursuant to the proposal from Schindler dated January 31, 2022, for the amount of $18,000, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Bayonne Family Community Center to provide CDBG funds in the amount of $18,000 for the purpose of providing payment due for the said work.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Weimer? Ms. Weimer, oh my... Don't worry, Mr. Perez has been Ms. Perez a couple of times too. It just slips, slip of the tongue. Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Add 2 is authorizing the mayor to sign all documents and certifications relating to the city's fiscal year 2022 CDBG program and CDBG CV special allocations to authorize the submission of the fiscal year 2022 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Redevelopment.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Add 3 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a cooperative pricing system with Hudson County for the purchase of goods and services pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-115.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Add 4 is from the Honorable James M. Davis, mayor, appointing Marlena Williams to the Rent Control Board as an alternate member for a term to expire July 31, 2025.
Move.
And on the communication, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Jay, you have the one more for the leasing purchase? The leasing purchase, you have that one? Okay. Okay. No, I got it. It's under a page. It is designating and confirming the mayor, clerk, chief financial officer, and any other necessary municipal officer to execute and deliver any and all lease/purchase agreements, escrow agreements, and any other related documents necessary to consumption, in consumption of the transaction contemplated by the lease/purchase agreement and escrow account. This is for the lease/purchase of the fire truck.
Move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Just before we run, I apologize for making it longer. But I was keeping track, and in the public speaking section, after the institution of the much-maligned five-minute rule, nine people were heard from, three city experts were heard from and gave comprehensive answers, and we were able to maintain order. So I think, going forward, this is a very good idea. Also, you will notice, those individuals that had comments to make did not have to then sit through four hours of a meeting to not get their question answered or to get it answered at the zero hour. They were able to speak in turn, in an orderly fashion, and then go back to their homes to be with their families before three hours or three days later. So I think this was a good move.
This was a unanimous decision on the whole council in order to organize the meetings better and to get government work done at the meetings. There was a lot of extracurricular things going on here, and that's the reason why we implemented some of these changes today. I think it'll go smoother the further we move along. And I want to remind everybody that every Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, we have Summer Sounds by the Bay. Please go out, there's some great bands playing. And I hear a lot of times people say there's nothing happening in the city of Bayonne. Go on the city website and look up what Recreation has, because Recreation, Peter Medio and his whole group over there, they do a great job. There's lots of programs, lots of things to do, there's lots... There's lots of programs, lots of things to do, there's lots of camps going on between the city and the county. So when I hear people say there's nothing to do, Summer Sounds by the Bay is another example of the things that are going on in Bayonne. And with that...
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Melanie, go ahead, what did you want? Can you come up to the microphone, please? Just so everybody could hear, Melanie.
I just want a brief comment. I was just listening to Neil said, and perhaps this will work out better. I don't know, time will tell. But by the same token, if we can see on the website, the city website, the agenda prior to... I mean, I didn't even see it tonight, and I've been looking. Now, this was a small meeting, there wasn't a lot to be discussed at all. But for the people who want to come and see what's going on, and especially if it affects them directly, I think we should be given at least a couple of days on the website, rather than walk in here. And yeah, it was there, I had to read it. I'm old, it's hard for me to read, you know, all that fast. But you know what I'm talking about, Gary? You look like you...
No.
I actually posted. I'm asking about, was it on the website?
No, it wasn't.
I've been looking for days.
If I can, this is the first meeting for this group. We had our, we have a schedule before we have the meeting. We have a pre-agenda meeting with the council president, Madeline, myself, the BA, other members.
Other directors.
So we all sit around, and what the administration's proposing, the council president gets to hear that, we work through all that to set the agenda. Because of vacation schedules and the meeting we had July 1st and everything, we put, instead of having, we normally have that on the Friday before the Wednesday meeting, which gives Madeline the time over the weekend to have the agenda add-on either Friday afternoon or maybe Monday on the website. That was not the case this time. We didn't meet till Tuesday before the caucus. We had the agenda caucus last week. We had a bunch of things we had to fix as far as our procedures to make sure that we're getting the most amount of information from our directors and from everybody so that the council understands what's going on. We had, you know, I sent you guys about 30 hours of reading material over the past two weeks. So I think you're gonna see, over time, this was not Madeline's fault, it was just...
I'm not pointing fingers, believe me. I never even thought of that. But again, for people who like, myself, and deciding, well, it's a rainy night, I don't want to go, but if there's something that affects me directly, my neighborhood, I want to know about it.
And the practice is that it is up there a couple of days in advance, and it will...
And, okay, of course it wasn't, and prior meetings, I mean, you guys, you know, this is your first new meeting or whatever, but I know you have a caucus, you have a general idea of what is going to be here.